I am going to call to order the Special City Council meeting. It is November thirtieth and six fifteen P M. First of all, please give your articles, join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution and the Constitution under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Starting December first, we're going to be going to the virtual meetings format, and you'll be able to access that through the website, and more information will go out for that. So this is our lasting person meeting for a while due to the COVID outbreak. Our first item of business is proclamation in support of Inclusive School Week. Nationally Inclusive School Week is held during the first week of December. For twenty twenty one Inclusive Schools Week will take place December sixth through twelfth. Since its inception in two thousand and one, Inclusive Schools Week has celebrated the progress that schools have made in providing supportive and quality education to an increasingly diverse student population, including students who are historically excluded due to disability, gender, socioeconomic status, cultural heritage, language preference, and other factors. This year, the theme, the Inclusive Schools Week theme, is rebuilding our inclusive community together. So as we come back together after the COVID pandemic and are rebuilding, we're happy to make this proclamation. So I'm going to ask Dr. Stephen Janowski, the superintendent of the Richfield Public Schools, to join me over here, and we're going to present the proclamation. All right, I'm going to read it for everyone. Whereas Richfield educators recognize each student is unique, learns differently, and therefore learns better if teaching is tailored to their abilities, needs, and interests. And whereas Richfield educators and families have been working hard to ensure classrooms and schools are high performing and inclusive. And whereas through their efforts to make schools and classrooms high performing and inclusive, Richfield educators and families have significantly contributed to building a stronger and more inclusive community. And whereas, Richfield educators and families deserve to celebrate their successes and should also reflect on how they might further improve educational practices. And whereas Richfield families and educators unite with schools, school districts, and communities around the country in celebrating Inclusive Schools Week. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Beal, Mayor Prokam, of the City of Richfield, and the Richfield City Council members, do hereby proclaim December sixth through tenth, two thousand and twenty one, as Inclusive Schools Week in the City of Richfield. So congratulations, if you'd like to say something.
So we have Richfield Public Schools and our school board. I'd like to thank Mayor Prokam, Mayor Beal, and our council members, our city leadership, our city staff, our community members in attendance, and Washington Online. We at Richfield Public Schools acknowledge Inclusive Schools Week at every week. I'm sorry, not just this week, but every week. Inclusive schools are really about acknowledging that every single one of our students needs everything that they have to ensure that they are empowered to excel and have the great features that they desire. You know, we've been recognized over this past year as having closed the outcome gap in graduation rates as one of the only school districts, and possibly the only school district in the state of Minnesota, where there is no predictability by race of students by graduation rate, meaning our students of color graduate at the same rate as our white students, something that we are celebrating for and it comes for acknowledgement. The schools need to be inclusive and need to make sure that they are serving each and every one of our students with everything that they need. So we are proud of our government of the city. We are proud of this proclamation, and we look forward to seeing you in our schools, and we look forward to celebrating Inclusive Schools Week. Thank you, Mayor Prokam.
Thank you, and the city looks forward to talking with you. Did any of the other council members want to say anything?
I'll just add, the statistic you mentioned is the first thing that came to mind when I saw this on our agenda. This is the work of our schools and the work that we at the city are trying to do to make our community a more equitable and inclusive space. So I appreciate, I know proclamations are a small piece and often are the tip of much more actual action that is long term and ongoing. And so appreciate both this moment and all the other ways that we continue to partner together. So, thank you.
All right, and again, thank you so much. Because this is, the schools are such an important part of our community, and we want to celebrate with you. Thank you again for coming. Next, we're going to conduct a truth in taxation public hearing regarding the twenty twenty two property tax levy and the twenty twenty one revised and twenty twenty two proposed budget and the proposed twenty twenty two utility rates. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Waylon, and there will also be a report from City Manager Rodriguez. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Prokam and Beal. At the September fourteenth, twenty twenty one, City Council meeting, City Council adopted the twenty twenty two preliminary property tax levy and announced November thirtieth, twenty twenty one, at six P M tonight, as the date and time for the statutory truth in taxation public hearing. Hennepin County has mailed the proposed twenty twenty two property tax statements to property owners in Richfield, which are based upon the proposed levy and announced the date of this public hearing. And I believe staff has a presentation on the proposed.
Senator Peter Bellinger?
No. This one is?
Hi, yeah, I'm in my.
So for anyone who's listening to this recording, we've been having some technical difficulties tonight, so we're recording it on the city clerk's smartphone and as a backup, I have Councilmember Waylon's, excuse me, Councilmember April O'Leary's phone, so that we have this as backup. But unfortunately, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to have a slideshow, but we can go through it verbally. Yeah, I didn't find out a paper coming either. Oh, there we go. It looks like perhaps it's working now.
Are you able to do that?
Yeah, great, thank you, Brandon.
He's always listening.
So I don't have a long presentation for tonight. This is what we've got to date. We've adopted the new levy since September fourteenth. Tonight, the truth in taxation hearing.
City Manager, I'm sorry, could you please begin to the mic?
Yeah.
For the recording.
Sorry, and then your next meeting, December fourteenth, we'll be bringing you the budget for your consideration for final adoption, and then also the final levy. So these are the key issues for our consideration for the twenty twenty one revised budget and the twenty twenty, twenty twenty two budget. Our general fund costs are suddenly going personnel costs. We are recommending a cost of living adjustment of three percent. We've got steps that range from three to eight percent for the different collective bargaining units. We are currently in negotiations with all the collective bargaining units. Three percent is very consistent with what other cities have provided, anywhere from two point thousand five percent to three percent. And also, it is a very competitive label for us right now, and we want to make sure that we can retain and recruit our channels. And so while it does start the budget and the cost of living adjustment, I do think that this is the right recommendation. We continue to have our revenues impacted by COVID, and those are the revenues that we're seeing the most impact with, and it continues. The council lowered the intoxicating labor license fee to be more consistent with other cities, and that was a point oh seven percent tax levy increase. Some of the revenues are not going to come back anytime soon. Our public safety, as our old program, that's a school resource outside program, was discontinued and had a eighty three thousand plus to the general fund. One of the revenues that has been more robust is building permit revenue, and that has been for several years now, but it's a very cyclical revenue, so we don't know how long that's going to last. Is it better without my mask? It's so much better. Some more key issues, local government aid has been a big part of our funding for a long time, but a declining portion of our budget. It was only seven percent for twenty twenty one. We expect two million dollars in twenty twenty two. There are impacts, we think, coming up with decertification of tax increment finance districts. On the rest side, I can talk about that a little bit more. We've done a good job of building city reserves, but it is a finite, finite, finite resource. And again, I can talk about that a little bit more later on. Property taxes fund about seventy one percent of our general fund budget, and our levy increase that we're recommending is four point nine eight percent. The American Rescue Plan Act, the city has received one point nine million dollars. The way the money is being distributed to cities is it's two installments, two equal installments, and they have to be at least a year apart. So we expect another one point nine million. It could be in the twenty twenty two budget, or it could be just outside of it. The eligible costs are these four buckets. We are pretty good to guide it so far from the federal government. They're still working on some details and clarifications. We have asked our directors to submit their eligible projects, and they submitted thirteen million dollars. So we're currently working on criteria with the directors, and then we'll present a ranking for you all for your consideration. This is a history of local government aid. As you can see, in twenty twenty one, when we decertified some smaller tiff districts, tax increment finance districts, but it was a pretty sizable decrease. So like I said, we are, we are making progress on that though. Our management analyst, Chris Johnson, is working with House Research to get some estimates. We won't be able to get detailed estimates this far away. They expect it closer to those tiffs decertifying, but we hopefully get some parameters. Capital reserve funds, we've done a good job of building these capital reserve funds. We purposely tried to retain some of that care's funding for future COVID costs. And because of reduced spending last year, we added about one point two million in twenty twenty. We've used the funds for buying down bonds to finance our COVID improvement program. We've also used it to fund internally new loans for some big expenditures. The current balance was, was six point six million, but if you see, when you drill down a little bit deeper, we expect it to be about five point nine million by the end of the year. And we've got two funds, there's special revenue funds that I was leaving in the pool, that have been in the red for a long time. And before finance attorney just left, he came up with a plan to pay that back, about four hundred thousand dollars a year, and it would be to twenty twenty eight. To bring those into the black, that's at the recommendation of both our auditors and the concerns of our power leading agencies. So I'm pleased that we are doing that. It does bring down the balance of those reserves, though, over time. We're also recommending a transfer from those reserves for both twenty twenty five and twenty twenty two. So if that continues, we will, we will deal with our balance for twenty twenty eight. I do think that those recommended transfers to deal with the impact of COVID is the right thing for us for the next couple of years. This is the, the gross levy, and like I said, it is a four point nine eight percent over twenty twenty one, and a total levy of twenty five million dollars. This is how it stacks up historically. You can see for the last four or five years, it's been, you know, it was lower than we were last year, or lower than we were in twenty eighteen, just slightly higher than twenty twenty, twenty nineteen. So it's been pretty consistent. These previous years, they were, they were doing lower cost of living adjustments, and the city was at less staff. We, we have added some staff positions, and we haven't done that until, but in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, because those positions were needed because of pace in which Richfield has been trying to manage that redevelopment and investment things like equity. So our twenty twenty two, the proposed general fund budget is almost twenty eight million dollars. That's a four point two four percent increase over the twenty twenty one adjusted budget. And these are the major funding sources. And you can see the impact of COVID on those revenues. You know, we're, we're still trying to give an estimate on how much that's going to impact twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. As you know, COVID continues to impact everything. The revenues still, as a proportion of the budget, have stayed roughly the same. And these are the different departments. The department directors, our goal was to try and have the department increases be three percent. That's tough to do if you've got a cost of living increase of three percent, and also you've got, um, alright, yeah. He's had some employees going through this stuff that have not been here as long. In twenty twenty two, compared to twenty twenty one, the proportions of the different budget categories are pretty similar. And this is pretty stable over time as well. So this is how it compares. It's been an average increase of three point six five percent. It has been pretty consistent in the last few years. So our personnel costs, we have one new position in twenty twenty one, but it's in the utilities, so it's not impacting your property tax levy. We are back down to twenty twenty levels. In twenty twenty one, we had, we had, we were higher in our lease force by one position, and that's now back to the regular levels. So pretty flat in the last three years. And this is how it impacts the average home. If you didn't have any increase in market value, it would be about two dollars more per month and an annual increase of about twenty five dollars. The residential increase has been strong this year. It's a seven point four percent market value increase overall. You know, Richfield continues to have a very hot housing market. And so if you look at it with the average market value increase, it's more like eleven dollars and forty cents per month, and also a hundred thirty seven dollars a year. Our proposed capital improvement budget is about twenty six and a half million dollars. Got some pretty exciting projects that we're going to undertake, one being the seventy seven million pass. And that was, has mostly been funded by federal and state funding. That's exciting. Sixteenth Street reconstruction will get started next year, and then we'll continue your project, and that's being funded by bonds. We also have some smaller utility projects and renovation upgrades. These are our plan, rolling stock purchases. We are, we're averaging about a million dollars per year of rolling stock costs, and the general tax levy has been averaging more like eight hundred thousand. So we are going to start charging the departments more in order to make sure that Internal Service Fund is recovering its costs. And that's all I have for the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. Before I open the public hearing, do you have any questions? Should I go ahead and open?
I have one question. Since we're having technical difficulties and we only have an audio recording, would you be able to post the slides that you presented on the website so that the public can see the actual slides? Yes, Mayor Prokam, we will absolutely do that, and we will also invite people to the December fourteenth meeting if they want to provide more testimony. So they could speak at the open forum on December fourteenth as well? Correct. All right, thank you. Is there anyone on the call in line?
Mayor, but I do not have anybody on the phone, and those slides are currently on the way.
Thank you. That was my only question. Thank you, Councilwoman Waylon.
All right, well then, with that, I believe we do have a few people here in the audience, so I will open up our public hearing, which is, I think, yeah, I'll wait on that. So for public hearing, each person will have three minutes to speak. You're invited to come up to the microphone here. We ask that you sign in, and you did by sharing your name and your address and account. But if there is anyone who would like to speak, or while actually we had one person, fill out their, their form part about time, so if you'd like to speak first, I welcome you up to the microphone here.
Good evening. Thank you for recording these slides, we're going to be. I'm happy to know that the cameras are not on me tonight. I wish to know that there are several individuals in Richfield, and myself included, who are not on the web. I assure you, for any reason, by age, you're not on the web. So when you guys go off now and think that you're communicating with your constituency by being on the web, you are not. Okay. I stand in opposition to the city staff proposal to invest their tax dollars in revamping the chamber's communication system. On more than one occasion, I have made presentations to council. City staff used creative editing to distract from and to avoid the impact of my messages. Likewise, no sense has been made of the written minutes, which were not given to communicating my intent nor my content. Instead, filming and audio technique were used to modulate my voice to a dull, to a dull monologue, and my gestures were filmed as if to remove all gesticulations and punch. Instead, when council choose to modify input from the public, so as to put happy dates and comments where there are none, no amount of money spent is going to get your message across. Honest reporting of minutes and filming and of audio are set out in law governing proceedings of public meetings. Our council, it seems, is much more concerned with spitting than with accuracy in recording. Now you'll know that I don't speak in a monologue. And you want to put your camera right up on my face and pretend I'm saying things the way I'm not saying them, as has been done in the past, I don't see why the public should spend money for you to misguide us as to what is being said and the messages that are being provided here.
Thank you for your comments. Others will refer here to speak in the public hearing. Now would be the time. Again, if you would like to introduce yourself and assign a question.
My name is Ron Pitom. I live at sixty five, seventeen, fourteenth, Evansville. So I believe then I'm in the district. I moved in in nineteen eighty. So I'm a growing longer resident of the city. And when I get my tax notice, I agree with them. And usually seems reasonable, and I just go ahead and pay. And I have not come to one of these public meetings before. But I found a presentation helpful, and I'd like to thank all of you for your service to the city. I'm seventy two, and mostly on a fixed income. And when I saw my tax bill at thirteen point one percent, total increase, it kind of was a shock. Of course, we're all facing that because of the pandemic and its effects on our lives and on the economy. So I guess I had some questions about how the budget is put together. And some of those were answered by the president. Thank you. One is, given that a significant part of the population is on a fixed income, is, is there any statutory guideline that says when you go to raise taxes, no matter how much you think you need, there's got to be a limit? Like, five percent or six percent seems like a lot to me. But I, you know, always in the past is going to have in the act of thirteen point eight, it seemed like, well, more than what would be reasonable in a twelve month period. So I, you know, I wondered that either, there must be guidelines or, or something in law that can put a brake on some of that. And the other question I had is about citizen input outside of a public meeting like this. Are there other ways that you can, or the county can get our input on certain issues that they're facing? I know, I know it's a challenge to put together, but I've, I've been twenty years on my church finance committee, and it's better here. And we've rolled in trying to come up with a balance budget usually fairly, it's a bit smaller, of course, than what the county can do. However, the principles of rushing are, I think, there are known by many people in the community, and I just wondered, how does my government tap into some of the ideas that we might have that would be of help to those survivors? Those were the two things that I wanted to ask you about. Thanks for the time.
Thank you for your comment. And I would say to everyone here, after this, to go on and talk, either council or staff, talk more after the open forum is not designed for a back and forth conversation, but definitely open to more conversation afterward. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the public hearing?
Assistant Lynn, is there anyone here on the phone line?
I do not have anybody on the line.
Thank you.
One more time, I'll ask, is there anyone here that would like to speak at the public forum? Then I would make a motion to close the public hearing. I would second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Are there any other questions? All right, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. City Manager Rodriguez, did you want to add anything? No, thank you. All right, thank you. And as Councilmember Waylon said, we're happy to talk with people after the meeting in the fall if you want to kind of, you know, get more information. At this point, we're going to move on.
I believe, sorry, I believe I have to make a motion? Yes, I have to see how it sounds. That's okay. I would then make a motion to schedule final action on the 2022 property tax levy and 2021 revised 2022 proposed budget and proposed 2022 utility rates for the regular city council meeting of December 14, 2021.
Adrian O'Leary, second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Waylon and seconded by Councilmember E. Fodleberry. Is there any discussion? And can I emphasize what City Manager Rodriguez said? That due to our technical difficulties, if people want to speak at open forum on that evening, that that will be permissible? Any other comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have passed the motion. Thank you, Councilwoman Royla. Next, we're going to move on to consider acceptance of the proposal provided by Tierney for audiovisual upgrades to the council chambers and the video control room. An additional quote for upgrades for conference training and briefing rooms within City Hall, fire department, public works, and public safety. Councilmember Hay for earlier.
All right, again, so this is to consider acceptance of the proposal Tierney for upgrades to council chambers and video control room at City Hall. It's exactly the same as the mayor for time president, but consider acceptance of the proposal Tierney for upgrades to the conference rooms at City Law, which is the Babcock, Bartholomew, Correa, and Executive, Fire Department, Training Rooms, Public Works Training Room, and Police Briefing Room. The council chambers and the conference training rooms get significant upgrades to adapt to virtual meeting platforms. Meetings or participants need to have the ability to view meetings as creating services or virtual meetings and portray good quality audio and visual display. It is recommended that the American Rescue Plan Act be used to purchase all of the upgrades outlined in the two quotes for the training. And does staff have additional information to add?
Yes, I do. I'm Jane Swol, I can't hear. I need to talk to you, or not do it personally. First of all, I apologize for the technical difficulties we've been interrupting all day and I'm not answering your question. And what it is, is we installed some new equipment, new software for our cable pass and stuff like that, and we're trying to get to work with old equipment. And so that seems to be our difficulty. So all the conference rooms and chambers will be upgraded to accommodate new technology, HPMI and ORK. It will allow us to have high-grade meetings. Maybe we will be able to have WebEx meetings and inverse meetings altogether on the, so that should, that should also help with needing some statutes that we need to, in order to have it. All the equipment will be upgraded in all the rooms. We also are installing an assistant listening system for those that are hard hearing, who can, will be able to listen very easily without any problems. All of the speaker system will be updated in all the rooms. New microphones, people like phones. We cannot get parts or replacements from it anymore. We will upgrade in some cameras. It will be carpeted with our voice over IP system, phone system, so that will all work together as well. This also gives us a more key and allows us to track your maintenance once a year and onsite service and unwanted phone support. The chambers, we will update the monitors all in front of you, which some of whom are blurry. The way I push buttons on your screen to change the different things will not be passed, so it won't be so hard to push the button. And the two displays facing the audience will be upgraded to 86 inches in ORK display. And monitor outside of the chambers for a workover place with 65-inch screen. The control room, which we helped with, I thought today, is the, will be the broadcast space, which is what we called, and, and price, P2016. The Babcock room, it will be, and my, taking the night phones off the table, putting the ceiling, so they won't feel as obnoxious. And the Bartholomew room, we will have new cameras that will provide audio tracking, automatic tracking, so when the person is talking, we'll know who's with that person. So we won't need to have as much staff involved in all the recordings. In the Correa room, we will add cameras for virtual meetings. Right now, we're not having cameras, so we can't do WebEx meetings in there. The Polyworks is also upgrading their equipment that they use for training in their lunchroom to provide more training for their staff. The police briefing room will also upgrade equipment for more, better training and updating targets. We're also updating the executive conference room for, so we can do better WebEx and virtual meetings in there as well. So do you have any questions? There is, one thing I'd like to add, too, is that on the statute report, the police training room, it just came, quote, just came in, and came in at $54,433. So just, you know, that was, we didn't have the time on the statute report.
Do you want to have any questions? Are there any questions?
I'm just to clarify, should we add an extra motion, or is it a record add in the future? I don't see public, going to be some public safety resources that tend to cover this one, say, for sure.
I think it would be best if you did add it, to clarify that we are supporting the assignment of it.
And it is place your training room, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Waylon?
Another question, but I'll just say thank you. I think any, anything in the tech world not getting upgraded for 10 years is sort of amazing, that it's still functioning. So it's long overdue for just maintenance and appreciate the opportunity then for the upgrades and the new functions that arise as well. So thank you. I know this is a long time coming and probably overdue, so. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Chalmers?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I just want to also say, I appreciate, and I assure the public, this is not performance art this evening with all the technical difficulties, but I think illustrates the need to have good technology. And as citizens have expressed, we don't get the benefit of the doubt when things don't work, when things don't work. And so as the government, it's really important that we provide the clearest communication possible. If nothing works, people don't assume, people just don't actually assume that things are actually not working. And so I think it's really important and would support this measure.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Yep.
Okay, I approve acceptance of the proposal provided by Tierney for audiovisual upgrades to the council chambers and the video control room. An additional quote for upgrades to, or also to the acceptance of the quotes for the police training room. And are there quotes in receipt that are listed? Everything in the motions?
I'm sorry?
Is everything in motion already received, well, or is that? It says an additional quote for upgrades to Congress.
That's the additional one that, that.
So I, I don't, a verbal was described, separate addition to the police training room, I've already described that spell.
Second.
It's been moved by, oh, Councilmember Hay for earlier and seconded by Councilmember Waylon. Is there any further discussion? I would like to add that having the flexibility of having people both in-person and online is important, and that will allow us to make it more accessible so that we get more participation from all members of our community. And so I do think adding that accessibility is really important. Any other comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, we have passed the motion. City Manager Rodriguez, is there anything else that we need to add?
Not tonight. I do appreciate your patience and grace with the technical difficulties tonight.
Thank you. All right, so seeing that our business is finished, we stand adjourned. Thank you.